From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
We'll get all the microphones on here. Supervisor Peters.
My mic's still right on. Right now.
There it goes.
There it is.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivener.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, February 7, 2023, 9:00 a.m. session of the Board of Supervisors. We'll begin today's meeting with a flag salute led by Supervisor David Couch.
Please stand. Place your hands over your hearts. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick moment of silence. Okay, at this time, we'll call on Nick Collin, our Director of Animal Services, to introduce our Pet of the Week.
Yeah, this is Butters.
Testin, and this is Butters. Go ahead, Nick.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I brought with me a puppy this morning. Her name is Butters. It's a little bit of a different situation because when I took her this morning, she was available, and by the time I got here, she had been adopted already. So it's a good problem to have, but she's also just an indication that we have so many puppies at the animal shelter that are available for adoption right now, and she's just one of them. So come out and adopt your next family friend at the county animal shelter.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Butters. Have a good home.
I want us to look at your new forever.
Okay, at this time, we'll begin considering the consent agenda. Agendas are located at the tables near the entrances for anyone that wants to follow along. All items listed with the CA above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed-session item. At this time, I will read the consent agenda numbers. On page two, items three through eight. On page three, items 11 through 16. On page four, items 17 through 23. On page five, items 24 through 28 and item 30. On page six, items 31 through 36. On page seven, items 37 through 39. And that's all the consent agenda items. Would anyone from the public like to comment on any of the consent agenda items? Okay, seeing none.
Mr. Chairman, I need to abstain from item number 31 because of a source of income to my spouse. And Madam Clerk, please record my abstention on item number 31, though I will vote on the motion to approve the consent calendar. My vote will only be for those remaining items. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Scrivener. Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Okay, you have a motion?
Second.
Motion second. Members, please cast your vote.
The motion is approved. All eyes.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'll go to resolutions and proclamations. First one is to proclaim February 2023 as Grand Jury Awareness Month, and Supervisor Scrivener will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, my motion second. Members, cast your vote.
The motion is approved. All eyes.
Well, it's been over a year since I've done this, so it's nice to be back in front of the board in this capacity. And so we have members of the grand jury with us here, including their foreman Enrique Vacuna. And so every year, in each of California's 58 counties, a panel of citizens take an oath to voluntarily serve a term of one year as a grand juror. Grand juries are impaneled to act as an arm of the court in order to be a voice of the people and the conscience of the community. The grand jury's fact-finding efforts result in reports that contain specific findings aimed at identifying concerns and offering recommendations to improve government operations. The grand jury seeks representation from all segments and areas of the county to serve as grand jurors. During the month of February, activities are planned to promote the grand jury and recruit new representatives. Also during the month of February, grand jurors, past and present, will be recognized for their efforts in serving Kern County on the grand jury. So therefore, it is my privilege to, on behalf of the board, present this proclamation. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed February 2023 as Grand Jury Awareness Month in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered into our board minutes and signed by our Honorable Chairman Jeff Flores. And I will present this to Mr. Vacuna. Mr. Vacuna, come on up. Thank you, and thank you for your work. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you for this, helping us celebrate the month of February's Grand Jury Awareness Month. As Mr. Scrivener has duly noted, the concept of the grand jury has been around since medieval times. The first California penal codes providing for the impaneling of a grand jury were passed in 1880. The California Constitution is unique in that it mandates that grand juries be impaneled annually to function specifically as a watchdog over county government as well as city governments, special districts, public health, educational entities, and joint power authorities within the county. The grand jury does and conducts investigation and publishes reports with findings, recommendations, and response to citizen complaints, and plays a vital role in criminal indictments. The Kern County Grand Jury is a body of 19 citizens who are independent of any political or special interest groups. No specific credentials are necessary. The grand jury draws from a diverse backgrounds and life experiences. One thing my colleagues and I have in common is that we love Kern County and want to keep it as a great place to live. Recruitment for the grand jury's next-year term, 2023-2024, is currently open, and applications will be accepted through March 3, 2023. The grand jury would like to once again thank you for this proclamation or for the wonderful cooperation that we receive from the clerk of the board and from the department heads. Thank you very much.
Mr. Scrivener, would you like to take a photo?
Oh, okay. Back in. Will you take a photo?
Take a picture.
Sweet to see you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Vacuna, I have one quick question. Sure. If a member of the public is interested in serving, where would they apply? What's the vehicle? We have available, the grand jury has a website, and if they Google Kern County Grand Jury, they'll be able to get all the information that they need. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to item two under resolutions and proclamations. This is a resolution to proclaim February 2023 as Safely Surrendered Baby Awareness Month in Kern County, and Supervisor Dave Couch will be making the presentation.
Motion on the proclamation.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Motion second. Members, cast your vote.
The motion is approved. All eyes.
It is. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, some of the work that the county does, you really don't ever see the success of it. And sometimes, it's literally one person, one day, one minute at a time. We do have a star of the show here, by the way, as you can probably tell already. But I am honored to present this proclamation. I'm going to present it to Lido Morella, who, as you know, runs our Department of Human Services, and he's got some folks to introduce and maybe a little story to tell. So I'll read this into the record, and I'll present it to Lido, and we'll let him do that. The proclamation reads, "The Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed February 2023 as Safely Surrendered Baby Awareness Month in Kern County. This recognition's been entered into the official board minutes, signed by our Honorable Chair Jeff Flores, as stated today, February 7, 2013." And again, this is one of those success stories that sometimes we just don't ever hear about. We just hear about all the effort that goes into it. So Lido, tell us a little bit more. Present that to you and tell us a little bit more. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'd like to start off by saying, as Supervisor Couch said, the star of the show, that's not me, that's Avia, obviously, the baby altogether. But again, thank you for this proclamation. I'm pleased to be joined to share with the board and our community what safely surrender is all about. And I'm also joined here today by this esteemed group behind me. DHS is not alone in this effort as we educate the public in our community about safely surrender and what that all entails. Our partners include First Five, Kern Family Healthcare, Advenus Hospitals, Dignity Health, Mercy, and Memorial Hospitals, Kern Medical, Ridgecrest Regional, Kern Valley Healthcare, Kern County Fire, Bakersfield City Fire, Kern County Public Health, Bakersfield Pregnancy Center, Kern County Right to Life, Coenea Family Services, and Clinica Sierra Vista. I'd also like to acknowledge First Five, as well as Kern Family Healthcare. They're actually funding a lot of the PSAs that will be airing at our local theaters this month. The coalition that's behind me has been very active throughout this month in terms of sharing this message in 20 different collaborative meetings throughout Kern County, as well as doing proclamations like this in various Kern County city. So what is safe surrender and what is it all about? It allows a mother, a newborn, with a newborn, to basically walk into a fire department as well as an emergency hospital to surrender their baby with no blame, no name, or no real kind of prosecution to go along with it. It's really important because when mothers are in crisis, to have this alternative. Because prior to this, there were so many stories about babies being abandoned in our community. So, you know, after a mother actually surrenders their baby, they have up to 14 days to reclaim it. And just to kind of put this in perspective, there were five babies claimed safely surrendered in 2022 and one reclaimed. Since 2006, inception of this law, Kern County has safely surrendered 95 babies in total. babies in total. And and really, the true success story to this project is the Salazar family that's behind me today, that both Emerys and Ben are going to share their story, and I'd like them to come up and talk about it.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, and thank you for having us. We are a family of three children. Our two are with a babysitter today. So two boys are now adopted, daughter. My wife grew up around foster families and families who had adopted other children. And as Christians, we've always hoped to adopt one day, because, as the Bible says, we are to love in deed and in truth, not just in word or speech. Our daughter once was nameless and without a family, and now, thanks to the safe surrender law, she's been grafted into our family tree forever. This law allows a mom to legally and anonymously surrender a baby, which we should pause and realize that it takes tremendous courage to realize you don't have the ability or resources to care for your baby. And we will be forever grateful to her for giving our daughter life and the opportunity to belong. Every safe surrender adoption is a beautiful depiction of the love of God for a broken world through the gospel of Christ, that whoever comes to Jesus will bear the name and belong to the family of God. The Bible says that God is a father to the fatherless, is God in His holy dwelling. God sets the lonely in families. He leads out the prisoners with singing, but the rebellious live in a sun-scorched land. And when the set time had fully come, God sent His Son, born of a woman, born under the law, to redeem those under the law, that we might receive adoption to sonship. Spiritually speaking, all of us in this room today are spiritual orphans due to our sins and are alone, nameless, and without a family, like our daughter was at one point. But in His grace, God has given us His Son, so that through Him, we might be like our daughter. And the meaning of our name, God is My Father. In Him only, we are finally at home. And thanks to this law, our daughter is finally home with us as well. And we encourage others who are considering adoption to consider this option. Thank you very much.
Again, I just want to thank the Salazars for sharing their story. It's truly a success story in our book. I'd also like to invite the board, as well as the community, for our press conference that we're having, to, again, spread the message of the safe surrender law and what's been to our community. And the press conference is actually scheduled for tomorrow at ten thirty at Kern Medical. So thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Chairman, so much. First of all, Supervisor Couch, thank you for bringing this motion forward and for highlighting that there are so many acts that happen every day. I think that was so well-stated, that we don't know about and we can't know about, right? But these moments are opportunities. Lito, you always bring us the best stories. What a beautiful family, what a beautiful story. To think that ninety-five since two thousand and six have ended up here in celebrating family, right? Celebrating the beauty of family in whatever form it takes, right? For us as individuals, celebrating rather than reading a tragedy, right, about an abandoned baby somewhere, a family in crisis, really with no real choices. This is a real choice. It is practical, right? It's done in grace and love, and it is really the best of us. And Kern County has a mother, looking at this mother here extending all this love to this precious angel. And my heart is full of both gratitude and just really tremendous gratitude for all that you do, all the little acts that lead to really a miracle. Life is so precious, as we know. So really, to all of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving forward, at this time, we'll consider public presentations. This portion of the meeting observed persons to address the board on any matter, not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. Also, the board may take action to the direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. The speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state and spell your name before making your presentation. Thank you. Any members of the public that would like to address our board, come forward.
Good morning. My name is Ralph Robles. I am a veteran. And this morning, I am bringing two topics to you. The first one, I am very thankful that we had the grand jury here, because I have a request of them to investigate whether or not our schools are receiving films from the Governor's Wife's Organization, which have been found to be very pornographic. And I'd like to submit this article for display, denoting the severity of this situation.
Thank you, sir.
The other item that I'd like to bring to your attention is, at the last meeting, Supervisor Peters, when in a brisk discussion of the Dominion voting machines, said that you had no choice, because the state mandated what you could use. So I did a little research myself, and I found no law, no regulation, that requires you to use any voting machine. If you do use a voting machine, the state will tell you which voting machines you can use. But it does not say that you have to use it. And it does not say that you cannot use a hand count. And to my understanding, a hand count with decentralized counting will actually bring your results in almost within twenty-four hours, at a lower cost than using any of these voting systems that we are paying so much money for. And it will provide more employment for some of the people around the state that would enjoy the opportunity to partake in our election system.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Robles, I just wanted to clarify in my comments that I was referring to voting machines that are used, are regulated by the state, which ones we are allowed to use, which ones we're not allowed to use. The state certifies those and tells counties which ones you can or can't use. So I think that was misunderstood, or there was some miscommunication there, but I just wanted to clarify that.
May I add one more comment?
No, we're having, we have someone next. Supervisor Peters, were you through? Okay, thank you Supervisor Peters. Next speaker. Go ahead, sir. Give us your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Matthew David LeGrand.
Thank you, Mr. David. Thank you, Mr. Robles.
Mr. Chairman, I spoke with Matthew earlier this morning, and he told me that he is trying to apply to serve on one of our board's commissions or committees. So I had him go up to the fifth floor and get an application. So once he fills out that application, he'll drop it off at our office, and I will distribute it to all five board members.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Can I add?
Sure, Supervisor Perez.
Thank you so much, Chairman. Sir, I think it's LeGrand, if I heard you correctly. If you want to have a list of commissions, boards that are available, you can head to my office on the fifth floor, speak to Christian Romo, and we will get you a list that are available. And, you know, perhaps we'll talk about, you know, ways to make communication very effective, so that all of your ideas and contributions are really honestly considered. And my office would be, would love to help you with that. So if you need some help, I'm not saying you do, but if you do, my office, Christian Romo, we would love to help you with that. Okay? We're on the fifth floor.
Okay, thank you. Can we turn off the clock, too? The clock. Thank you.
I already turned it in.
Okay, so since you've already turned, yes, since you already turned it in, now we'll receive it, and then we'll consider it as our board and make the appointments as we determine. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any more public comments?
Good morning to the board, to the chair. My name is Dr. Stephanie Hartfield. For the record, that is S.T.E.P.H.A.N.I.E., last name H.A.R.T.F.I.E.L.D. So as I mentioned, my name is Dr. Stephanie Hartfield, and I'm here today to address the animal crisis that's happening in your city, in your county. Animal shelters and rescues are bursting at the seams with unwanted abandoned and neglected animals. I mean, it's gotten so bad to the point where they're now having to euthanize puppies, litters of puppies. What Mr. Nick had shown is one of those litters. And so I stand before you today and ask you to take action and possibly consider the following options. Number one is to create and pass a mandated spay and neuter law for the county. Santa Cruz County did this back in nineteen ninety-three, and it worked. There is data to show that it's worked. And I have with me today a blueprint, so the copy of it, for this work. And so if you need a ghostwriter, you're all too busy, let me be your ghostwriter. Second point is to raise a citation for Kern Ordinance seven point zero eight point zero four, which essentially stops illegal backyard breeding. Currently, it's just a misdemeanor and possibly up to a thousand dollars in fines. These people breeding animals illegally, they're pocketing thousands of dollars per litter. So this is nothing to them. So I ask that you consider that and that fine and raise it possibly to five, ten thousand dollars. If you go after their wallets, they'll consider, they'll think twice before backyard breeding legally. And I'd say even go one step further and create a whistleblower hotline. So neighbors will rat out the bad seeds, and they will call out people in this community. Finally, and most importantly, is this county needs to take animal abuse much more seriously and enforce the Penal Code five nine seven. There are people illegally dumping dogs in the back streets of Bakersfield. And it's not just that, they're abusing them. They are blowing off their heads, they are burning their faces off, they are poisoning these dogs. It is horrific for those of us who are out there in the field working, helping these animals. It is tragic, and it's unacceptable. So we need to do more as a society. And, you know, we need to do better for these animals. That is my time, but I will follow up via email. I look forward to continuing these conversations, and thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you, Dr. Hartfield.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Couch.
Doctor, are you a local veterinarian by chance?
I actually am not. I'm in the field of education.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me? Okay, thank you so much.
Next speaker.
Hi, Paul Linveste, District Three. I just wanted to come up today to apologize for a little outburst I had at the last meeting. I, my job, I mean, when I get up to the microphone, I was supposed to be addressing the board, and temporarily, I got a little flustered. And I apologize for that, because I realized that I was disrespecting the board by doing that. And again, I just wanted to apologize for my behavior at the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Linveste. You know, that was a tense meeting, and people were interrupting you, and that was your time. And so I understand your frustration, and I appreciate you coming before us. And you're always welcome, and we appreciate your comments. Okay, moving forward to board members, board member announcements. Any announcements from the board? Okay, seeing none, Supervisor Perez.
Thank you so much, Chairman. I want to announce I'm very happy when Paul Linveste comes to the board. That's my announcement.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Okay, that brings us to Public Services, item twenty-nine, which is Grand Ambulance Service, Ground Ambulance Service Performance Reports for Calendar Years twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one. And Bryn Kerrigan, our Director of Public Health, will be starting off the presentation.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Bryn Kerrigan. You're Director of Kern County Public Health. I'm joined this morning by the EMS Program Manager, Jeff Ferris. The item before your board this morning is an update on the performance of the ground ambulance companies who have contracts to provide emergency, non-emergency, and standby ambulance services countywide throughout calendar years twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one. Kern County's emergency medical services system divides the county into nine geographical areas with exclusive contracts for ground ambulance service for each area, known as Exclusive Operating Areas, or EOAs. The reports filed with your board today represent a comprehensive report card related to the performance for calendar years twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one for each contracted EOA ambulance provider. These reports are typically brought to your board annually. However, the last report to your board was July sixteenth, twenty nineteen, for the twenty eighteen calendar year. As your board is aware, the COVID- nineteen pandemic significantly impacted the operations of our department. While we did not present these reports to your board, we did post ground ambulance response time compliance on our website and have presented these reports to Kern County Emergency Medical Care Advisory Board each year. The COVID- nineteen pandemic has also significantly impacted the pre-hospital and hospital emergency medical care system in Kern County, a problem that is not unique to Kern County and has been recognized nationwide. Specifically, we have seen unprecedented nine-one-one medical call volumes in Kern County. In twenty nineteen, prior to the onset of the pandemic, Kern County experienced one hundred and seven thousand three hundred and fifty-six nine-one-one medical calls for the year. While we experienced a slight drop in twenty twenty, the year of the pandemic onset, our call volume has been rapidly increasing. In twenty twenty-one, there were a hundred and thirteen thousand and twenty-one nine-one-one medical calls, or a five percent increase in call volume in comparison to twenty nineteen. Last year, in twenty twenty-two, there were a hundred and thirty thousand four hundred and forty knuckle technicians and paramedics nationwide. And the nationwide shortage is expected to grow to thirty-seven thousand by twenty twenty-six. Both Liberty Ambulance and Hall Ambulance have experienced a twenty percent reduction in their staffing. Ambulance patient offload times, commonly referred to as A-Pot, is the time interval between the arrival of an ambulance at an emergency department and the time the emergency department assumes responsibility for the care of the patient. Ambulance crews spent seventeen thousand two hundred and forty hours during twenty twenty-two caring for patients within the hospital while they waited for the hospital to assume responsibility for the patient. for the hospital to assume responsibility for the patient instead of being in the field available to respond to 911 calls. A California Health Interview Study found that 22% of Kern County residents either delayed or completely skipped needed medical care in 2021 due to COVID-19, and that same study found that Kern County people who rated their health status as excellent significantly decreased from 26.7% in 2019 to 22.7% in 2020 to 17.8% in 2021. An American Psychological Association study found that nationwide, 42% of adults experienced an undesired weight gain during the pandemic, with an average of 29 pounds gained and 10% gaining more than 50 pounds. This has resulted in a greater need for more intensive healthcare services. Simultaneously, it is estimated that more than 9,000 physicians stopped practicing medicine during the COVID-19 pandemic, which has limited the availability of medical homes for our residents. These issues coupled have contributed to an increase in the usage of our emergency medical services system. Navigating the challenges of a significant increase on the use of a system hindered by an over 20% reduction in staffing to provide a needed service isn't easy. However, we did not just sit idly. We implemented short-term solutions to help bridge the gap during what we were hoping was a short-term impact to our system due to the pandemic, and have also been working to evolve the system to adapt to the way the system is continued to be used even after the pandemic through longer-term permanent improvements to the system. Our shorter-term, our shorter-term efforts included the development and implementation of an EMS system surge plan. This five-tiered plan was designed to adjust how 911 calls were responded to based on the current burden of the system. The system burden was measured by 911 medical call volume, ambulance decontamination volumes, patient offload times at hospitals, and the percentage of paramedic and emergency medical technician staff on COVID-19 isolation or quarantine. The assess and refer process was implemented as part of the EMS system surge plan. During times of excessive burden on the EMS system, the assess and refer policy allowed for an alternative recommendation for healthcare services instead of transport to the hospital following assessment in the field. Throughout the pandemic, during times of significant COVID-19 surge, 1,186 ambulance strike team personnel were brought into Kern County to assist with heavy call volumes. Additionally, during times of significant COVID-19 surge, three ambulance patient offload strike teams were placed at our three largest volume hospitals in Kern to assist with caring for patients arriving via ambulance to our hospitals while they waited for the hospitals to take over care for the patients. We also brought in hospital bed expansion teams throughout the pandemic to help increase hospital bed capacity within Kern County to assist with getting care to our patients. These teams were essential in helping the ambulances to quickly offload patients and return to the system to respond to the next 911 call. And finally, we launched a collaborative campaign urging our community to only call 911 in a true emergency. This collaboration included our department, both ambulance service providers, all Kern County hospitals, and all three local fire agencies, and was an attempt to educate our community on when it is appropriate to call 911 or to seek medical care in a more appropriate manner. Our long-term approach is to evolve our system and keep resources available to those who need them the most include the direct-to-triage policy, which essentially allows patients determined to not be seriously or critically ill that have been transported by ambulance to be taken directly to the hospital waiting room triage nurse, allowing the ambulance to transfer patient responsibility immediately and return to the field. At times, there are individuals who continually and intentionally misuse the 911 system. Continual misuse of the system depletes available resources for those who actually need them. When an inappropriate user is identified, the inappropriate user policy provides a process for the inappropriate user to be put on notice three times. If services continue to be misused following the third written notice, ambulance transports are discontinued to that specific user. Kern County's Emergency Medical Care Advisory Board established an A-Pot Task Force consisting of representatives from all hospitals, ambulance providers, fire agencies, and our department. This task force has been meeting monthly to identify challenges in the hospital setting that are leading to longer offload times and to develop solutions to overcome those challenges. Like with most other industries, the hospitals are struggling with staffing shortages and an increase in patient volumes. Nurses have specific nurse-to-patient ratios, and the hospitals will not offload patients unless they can meet those ratios. Additionally, due to staffing challenges, at times the hospitals are not able to open all of their hospital beds, which at times limits capacity and delays admission of incoming patients. Additionally, system-wide, we are experiencing, experiencing a significant increase in psychiatric holds, at times taking up to seven days to find alternative and more appropriate placement for patients. This delays discharge of these patients and causes a backlog in the admission of new patients. There is no quick, simple fix to A-Pot currently. These challenges are large and will take considerable time to overcome as they require systemic change and an increase in infrastructure. Kern County was the first county in the state of California to implement the Tele911 system, providing telehealth services in the 911 system. Through Tele911, first responders use a mobile application platform to connect with California emergency room physicians to perform telehealth visits with patients. Following an evaluation during the telehealth visit, the Tele911 medical provider determines whether the patient requires transport to the emergency room or an alternative location, advises treatment on scene, and/or links the patient to more appropriate forms of medical care and social services. If the determination is made not to transport the patient to the emergency room, the Tele911 medical provider subsequently follows up with the patient via telehealth, and the 911 responder clears the scene and becomes available to respond to another call. Tele911 has been utilized on 798 patients since we began a phased implementation in July of 2022. Of these 798 patients, only 211 or 26% ended up requiring transport to the hospital. The department has been reviewing Emergency Medical Dispatch, or EMD, codes and their corresponding response methodology. Using local real patient data for a two-year period and a methodology used by four Northern Central Valley counties, we have determined that we have been overresponding or sending a higher level of care than needed in many instances. On Thursday, Kern County's Emergency Medical Care Advisory Board will consider a proposal to change response methodology in accordance with patient data, which we believe will provide some relief in the system and more appropriately dispatch resources to 911 callers. A trial change to the 911 medical response configuration was conducted in November and December of 2022. This trial, referred to as the Fly Car Trial, removed paramedics from ambulances and put them in response vehicles while ambulances were staffed with emergency medical technicians. As 911 calls were received that determined to be advanced life support level or requiring a paramedic level of care, the ambulance and the fly car were dispatched to the call. On scene, the paramedic would evaluate the patient and determine if paramedic level care was in fact needed. If the patient was determined to require paramedic level care, the paramedic would join the crew in the ambulance and accompany the patient to the hospital. If it was determined the patient did not warrant paramedic level of care, the emergency medical technician crew would transport the patient to the hospital while the paramedic would become immediately available in the system for the next call. The Fly Car Trial proved successful in getting the paramedic back available in the system 64% faster. Specifically, on average during the trial, the paramedic units became available within 25 minutes, while the other units became available within 1 hour and 11 minutes. This trial will also be considered at Thursday's Emergency Medical Care Advisory Board meeting as a permanent response configuration in our system. Ambulance Response Time Compliance is a complex calculation that measures response time within each EOA by the priority code level of the call type in each zone, which is determined by population density. These charts are a simplified way to look at ambulance response times and illustrate the percentage of calls by provider that have a compliant response time, and do not break down compliance to the level that is measured in the report cards provided to your board. However, in looking at these charts, you will see that both providers are starting to see compliance levels improve, even though call volumes are much higher and staffing shortages continue to exist. This chart and graph illustrate the 22% increase in call volume, but the much smaller increase of 4% in ambulance transport volume. We believe the decrease in transport volume from 72% of the calls in 2019 to 62% of the calls in 2020 is a result of the continued effort to evolve the system by implementing new approaches to service delivery and policies addressing the misuse of the system. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this concludes my comments. However, representatives from Hall Ambulance Service are in the audience and have requested to address your board on this topic. Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I would invite them to the podium.
Oh, absolutely. Please come up. Thank you, Bryn.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and the rest of the board. My name is John Surfus, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer, Hall Ambulance. We've got a little presentation. So it's a pleasure to be here. We have enjoyed trying to figure this out over the last couple of years. COVID has been a monster, to say the least, in healthcare, and we've been trying to figure it out. We appreciate the work from, from all of our partners. And I can tell you that Kern County is the only county that's making strides on some of these issues. So when I hit that, Jeff. There we go. Okay, a little bit about us. You guys know that we were started 42 years ago this Friday is the birth of the company, founded by Harvey Hall, and now it's owned and operated by Levon Hall. And you see some of our folks here in uniform today. Had we had this discussion six months ago, they wouldn't be here. They were staffing ambulances. Our entire management team was on an ambulance from 6:00 in the morning, sometimes till 7, 8:00 at night. We had people work 20 and 30 days in a row without a day off, trying to make sure that there was equipment available to respond. We have 455 employees working for us. I'll also add, those 455 represent $27 million of payroll last year. So, so now you know that the EOAs are broken into zones, and we have everything but six and seven that we're responsible for. It's a huge area, and every day it takes about 70 ambulances deployed to make the system work. In the middle of the pandemic, we were running in the neighborhood of 50 ambulances to make it work. And we'll get into the whys. I'm going to break this up into three areas, the pre-pandemic, the pandemic, and post-pandemic. And they're all important. Pre-pandemic, we knew that there was a nationwide shortage of EMTs and paramedics. Everybody in the nation was complaining about it. At every conference you would go to, they would talk about the shortage of staffing and what are we going to do? There were more competition for a paramedic. You'll see a slide later how many, how many we've hired. But it's tough to find a paramedic now and get them to come to work for you. One of the reasons for that, there's a lot of alternative work. People now with an EMT certificate or paramedic license can go to a lot of different places. A lot of states during the pandemic changed what paramedics could do. It used to be only do prehospital care. They've evolved throughout most of the states and brought those people into hospitals, into urgent cares, making it more difficult. And I could never talk about staffing without mentioning that Medi-Cal hasn't increased reimbursement in 20 years. It's still $117. We actually took a 10% decrease 20 years ago. So Medicare reimbursement doesn't cover the cost to put an ambulance on the road and run the call. And so our response to that, we actually started this 20 years ago. We knew there was a problem with staffing, and we started our own EMT Academy. Now we run, in a beautiful facility over off of Easton Drive, we run an EMT Academy and a paramedic program in-house. Our instructors, our equipment, everything is on us to provide that. So, most of you will recall, in the spring of 2020, March Madness was, was just taking off, baseball season was about to begin, and then the world shut down, when the pandemic finally started to grow in America. Our crews then immediately had to start wearing personal protective equipment almost all day long. That summer, 100-degree-plus days, waiting for offloads at hospitals in your full PPE, a huge spike in call volume that has not decreased. You saw that in Ms. Kerrigan's slides. Employees started moving from full-time to part-time because they had to manage their families. There were no schools open. They didn't, you know, spouses had lost jobs, different things were happening, and so our employees, a lot of them had to go part-time. We had a mass exodus to other states, right? There's lots of arguments about how, how California dealt with the pandemic. So people just packed up and moved elsewhere to get away from, from the response. Employee stress became at an all-time high, no doubt about it. You could see it in their eyes, you could feel it in their reports. You could, it was incredible how much pressure was being put on them. And employee morale dropped to an all-time low. It's hard to hire people when your employees, in today's digital world, when they're not happy, everybody in America can see that they're not happy, and it makes it hard to hire in that environment. So along came the county. Mr. Ferris called one day and said, hey, I think I can get you 10 ambulances. Okay, how about 20? He said, no, I can get you 10. And the next day, 10 ambulances rolled into town. We became very efficient at in processing those out-of-county resources because that's gone on now. It hasn't stopped yet with the out-of-county resources. There was a change, and we'll discuss that in a moment. The county also was the fir-, by the way, they were the first, the, you know, at times, they were the only county to get strike teams. Other counties were asking for it, and they hadn't figured out the magic code to get it. But our county figured out a way to get it done. Kern County also brought in some outside EMTs and paramedics from a private company that works just like a travel service, like the nurses do. As we had peaks and valleys in 2021, the county would offer assistance on different days. We actually, every day, our HR department would send a report to Mr. Ferris, letting him know how many people we had coming and going, and what our staffing level was. How many people were out on COVID? There were days where it was 20. How many people were out with other, other illnesses? So, but the relief workers really didn't have an impact on response times, right? All they had an impact on was making sure there was at least one ambulance available to handle calls, and it really improved some morale. But it didn't fix response times. In 2022, we transferred the striking responsibility over to us. We now became the buyer, not the county. We purchased over 7,000 deployed hours of both ALS and BLS. With that comes the additional cost of hotels. We had to put them up somewhere, and we had to pay for their meals. Staffing agency, EMTs and paramedics were transferred to us. So far, we've purchased over 28,000 hours of EMT and paramedic time, and of course, we have to pay for their hotels. We found that we actually are renting multiple apartments. It's cheaper to put them in an apartment than to put them in a hotel, trying to decrease our costs a little bit. Some other things that we did, Liberty Ambulance has been a good partner. Liberty from Lake Isabella and Ridgecrest, they came to help when needed, when they could. They may be in town on a transfer. You know, we're the, we're the dispatch center for all the ambulances in the county, so we can see where they are. So when, when you have transfers stacked up, 10 and 12 and 14 deep, most of those going out of town, Liberty was able to help us with some of those. They also offer critical care transport service like we do, and the CCT transfers were coming in six and eight a day, and we only operate one unit. So we got lots of help from Liberty. Pro Safety Rescue, their, their primary role is oil field and construction, safety and rescue. They have been a tremendous partner. We started working with them about, probably in March. We purchased 8,000 hours from them of both ALS and BLS services. The good thing with them is we don't have any hotel or meal costs. They made a tremendous commitment to us. They're switching all their, their ambulances over to be compatible with our dispatch center, so we can see where they are and communicate with them better. Trinity Safety is in the process of trying to do the same thing. I would think that within a couple of weeks, they'll, they'll come online. And again, that's a local resource, so our money is staying in the local economy and not going down to LA or Orange. I will say that the, the, the strike teams that the county was purchasing, and then those that we've continued to contract with, those folks come from the LA County and Orange County ambulance associations. There's about a dozen companies, and they take turns sending units up. They can't send five or six units. They can't send five or six units. They can send one for a few days, and that's what we've been buying. So that's what we've been trying to do in 2022 to improve response times. That total cost for us in 2022 was $7 million. So our payroll was $26 million, but we paid $7 million to buy additional hours. Today, we have seven subcontract ambulances on duty throughout the day, and then we have 42 travelers on staff right now, working four to six days a week. Post-pandemic, which is really what matters, right? What are we doing now, right? So the Harvey L. Hall EMS Academy is really one of our most important tools. There are not people applying for work from out of town, so we have to create them. We do three classes per year. Today, we have a class of 17 that started 8:00 this morning. That's our most recent, that's the biggest class we've had since the pandemic started, by the way, right? So 90 days to complete all the training, licensing, certification. It's more than 15 years we partnered with B.C. to put on that program. We also do a paramedic program through B.C. That takes about 18 months. There is a huge difference between a paramedic and EMT, a massive difference in what they can do. And our current class of paramedic students are in hospital rotations. So we got to try and be competitive, right? So in January, we increased wages by 6.5%. We would love to have done 22, like you did with your detention officers, but it's just not there right now. We're, you know, we're still impacted by reimbursement rates. We have entered into a massive online campaign. We've done sneaky things. When you're in certain hospitals down in LA, if you get on your cell phone to surf the internet, our ad pops up. We're using geo fencing to run ads, to try and attract other folks to work. If there's a job fair, if it's a job fair for high school kids, college kids, doesn't matter where it is, if there's an open job fair, we're there. We actually have some of the contracted workforce, both from the LA operation and from the out-of-town, the out-of-state operation, that are actually coming to work for us. They've enjoyed the community and what we do here, and they're actually coming to work. Another thing that's really important for our retention is a huge commitment to mental health, right? I don't care who the first responder is, they are seeing things and hearing things that stick with them and hurt, and, you know, we've got a huge commitment to try and keep our employees healthy and keep them working. Here's a little hiring comparison. In '18, you'll notice that we hired, let's see, 59, 60, 90 people, and then in 2021, we hired 34 people. And in 2022, we were able to hire 87, and we've already got a new employee orientation on our belt for 2023 that had five new folks, and we've got 17. So we're growing our applications, finally. We're growing our workforce, and we're committed. And the number at the bottom is the paramedic program. Those are people we paid to go to paramedic school, right? There's not enough paramedics in the program at any of the local colleges, so we have our own program, and those are people that we paid to go to school, and we took them from, a lot of these people come in, the EMT Academy, no training, right? Zero training in EMS. We train them as an EMT, they get a year under their belt as an EMT, and then we turn them into a paramedic. And that's been, that's, we've got people sitting behind me in uniform that started in that EMT Academy, and now their manager's 15 years later. So it's a big program for us. Other factors that impact response times, you heard Ms. Kerrigan speak of this, hospital patient offload times. As we're sitting here, my phone is ringing, and we have delays at three of the hospitals. One of them's up to two hours already. Yesterday, at Antle Valley Hospital, which is the hospital of choice for people in the East Kern, by the way, so we take them to Antle Valley Hospital. We had a unit with three patients that wait almost six hours to offload, and that's, you know, we can't get back. So the department tried to get involved in that. Finally, our supervisor just went in and threw a temper tantrum and got to bed, right? We really don't get much help from the hospitals on offload times, right? I send letters and poke at them, and a few years ago, I sent all the hospitals bills for the time that we lost. It was almost $5 million that we billed them for. Nobody paid. We knew they wouldn't, but we were trying to send a symbolic message, how bad the problem is. So we actually pay crews to sit at hospitals now and watch patients, right? It's a new term in EMS called stacking patients. So you'll have one paramedic crew sit at the hospital, watch anywhere from two to five patients on cots, and we actually leave extra cots at the hospital. I was like, "Sure, come on, put those in here." We love to, because that's easy for them, and they don't have to commit any people to watch those patients. So at the height of the pandemic, I don't know, there may have been 10, I don't know how many cots you guys deployed to the hospitals, but it was 10 or 15. It was a tremendous number of people sitting on extra cots. So transfers out of town are a really big deal. They continue to be a big deal. Some are for specialty care, up to the children's hospitals or down to CAT for some serious surgery. Sometimes it's the only place they can admit. Here recently, the hospitals of choice are in Riverside. We're making multiple trips every day from Bakersfield to Riverside hospitals, because that's where the beds are, right? That's where there's a floor that's got openings. At the height of the pandemic, we actually told all the hospitals that, when they would say, "Hey, you really need to come to this patient now," we're like, "Well, there's, you know, we're still on 911 calls. As soon as we can get loose, we'll take care of it." We gave them permission to call other providers outside the county. Not a single provider from outside the county wanted to come and run those calls. So it's getting better, right? But there's still a lot of work. So I mentioned our collaborations with the county. I think it's really open on both sides, hey, let's try anything. Let's look at any solution that may help improve response times and decrease inappropriate use. You know, when EMS started, it really was, you call, we haul, right? Last night, I happened to come across the TV show Emergency on one of the cable channels, and I sat and giggled and watched it for a little bit, and the ambulance crews back in 1971 had an advanced first aid card. They would just pull up, open up the doors, load the patient on the gurney, and take off. That's how EMS started, right? It's evolved now to this very intricate system of different levels of care, different levels of response, but we still base it on the you call, we haul, right? Somebody calls 911, they expect to go to the hospital. The number one complaint we get from customers is, "Hey, you took me to the hospital, and you put me in the waiting room. I didn't call an ambulance to go sit in the waiting room. I should have got a bed." "Well, no, the hospital triaged you to the waiting room." "Well, no, but I called an ambulance. You have to take me to the front." And that's really what people believe, is they get, you know, they're flying first class, they think. So that system has to change. The tele-911, I'm happy to say that it's now available in every community that we serve. All of our paramedics now have tele-911. There is an update that we're running through the vendor. We have to update all the iPads to a new format, so that's going to take us a little while. The flycar experience, Jeff Ferris threw that out to us a couple of years ago. I think it was Indianapolis that was running it, and we played around with it a little bit, and then we just made it work, and we did it during the holidays. And it does work, and so that will be a permanent thing, hopefully. That same company keeps telling us they're going to develop a physician hotline as well, where perhaps when you call 911, the dispatcher diverts that call over to the physician who takes care of the problem rather than sending an ambulance. So we have tons of patient encounter outcome now, outcome data. On any patient we take, to all the hospitals in town, we have the outcome data. So we can actually look at, what we should be looking at is what happened in the end, right? And we've got all that data available now. Without a doubt, you heard the word, I think, a couple of times from Ms. Kerrigan. You heard the word evolve, and that's fact. It's time to evolve, right? It's time for us to spend the right amount of money on the right system. And the system now, it's a disincentivized system, because the only reimbursement is if you transport somebody to the hospital. The tele-911, one of the largest groups that pay for service in our area, they don't pay for us. When we go out to, and we use tele-911, they don't pay us. Medicare doesn't pay, and one of the biggest carriers, commercial carriers, doesn't pay. And they sent me a letter yesterday, "Hey, we're still talking about it." So the system has to change at some point, and now's the time to get started on that. So the question, from the beginning of the discussion with Ms. Kerrigan explaining how bad things have been, you know, are we getting better? So this is a report that I get every day. All those red dots are areas that we did not meet our response time compliance, or for that entire month. It's an aggregate of the month, and I get this every day. We have a computer system that takes all of our data out of our CAD, shares it with the department live, right? And then can run compliance and tell everybody on a moment's notice whether we're compliant. So this is a report that comes out of that every day. So that's July, right? And this is current, right? So I absolutely would argue that we're making progress. Any red dot on there is bad, right? We understand that, but when you look at where we were when the pandemic hit us, and so when you go there and see that, where we're not compliant in almost every EOA that we operate, and then now you can see that we've done our work to try and, and we're not done. We're still developing tools, and we're collaborating with the department and looking for ways to improve service. You know, when Harvey Hall started his ambulance company, you know, he walked door-to-door asking people to pay, "Here's my phone number. Call me when you need an ambulance." He went to every doctor in town, and went in, shook their hand, and said, "Call me." That evolved into contracts, and if he were here with us right now, you know, he'd be sitting here with a very frustrated look on his face, because of the previous slide. That would drive him nuts, right? And it's hard on all of our staff, all of our managers, because they get that same report every day, and they know that it's bad. And then here's where we've come. So I think that we're getting better every day. We're spending a lot of money every day to make sure that your constituents are taken care of, and, you know, we're out meeting with every city manager throughout our response areas. We're meeting with anybody, any city council that wants a presentation, we're going to go and talk to them and tell them what's going on, right? And anybody that says it's not transparent, really hasn't asked the right questions. Every bit of our data, every day, before, we don't even, automatically goes to the department, and they have access to it. So anyhow, that is our presentation. I can certainly answer, take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Surfus. Any questions from the board supervisor Perez?
Thank you so much, Chairman. Wow, what a presentation. That was excellent. Thank you. Really, truly excellent, informative and complex on a level that is above my pay grade, obviously, but I appreciate it was a user-friendly presentation. This transition we're in, or what you're doing, is really fascinating. I was, and I'd love to hear from you too, Bryn, at some point, but what is the methodology by which the ambulance world, if you will, goes, "Oh, tele-911." Oh, you know, how does that work?
So there was a term floated, I don't know, seven or eight years ago. Well, let's go back to the Affordable Care Act. When the Affordable Care Act was passed, there was a lot of mandates in healthcare in general that haven't been followed, right? And one of them is that we try to make a healthier community, right? And we try to make it less expensive, right? So the way we're doing it now is really expensive for insurance carriers. Telehealth will invert that a little bit, because, you know, if I come to your house and break out my laptop, and we get a doctor on the phone, and the doctor says, "Let me just offer Supervisor Perez a prescription at her local pharmacy, and she doesn't need to go to the ER. We've just saved money for everybody but us," right? We understand that, but that's the right thing to do.
That doesn't make sense, though. We have to fix that.
That's right. It's backwards, right?
Yes, completely.
And the carriers understand that it's backwards, but they've got their rules they've put in place that take a lot of work to change. So we've got to get away from the you call, we haul, right? We've got to get away from that and get, deal with the issue at the lowest level, right? The least expensive way to take care of your medical problem. By the way, we get a lot of calls for mental health issues. We get a lot of, and, you know, with the telehealth program, one of the things they do, the doctor gets on the phone, he speaks with them, and he'll do, we do an assessment that he has his, he or she has their conversation, and it may be just a reminder, "Hey, are you taking your medicine?" "Well, no, I'm not." "Well, let's take your medicine today," right? Little things like that save, right? The fly program that you heard about, that will, in fact, there's a paramedic sitting in a vehicle in your neighborhood, and they run to the call. They get there really quick, and they don't have to go to the hospital. If it's a broken leg, they're not going to go, unless they need pain medication, they're not going to go. So the paramedic stays in your community, and we route another EMT ambulance into the neighborhood. So it's a, nationwide, back to the community paramedicine thing, nationwide, the, some of the carriers, some of the providers started floating these ideas, community paramedicine, you got to do this, got to do that. California, they had 13 pilot projects for community paramedicine. This wasn't one of them. Telehealth wasn't one of them. It's not one that, I think part of that is the disincentive to not get paid, right? Why do you want to go off and do something and not get paid for it?
Correct, correct.
Well, we're smarter than that, right? We really, we really, Kern County, right, has limited resources. Every department in the county has limited resources. We have limited resources. We got to find a way to use our resources better, and that's what we're trying to do.
And to your point, grow our own talent. I love what you're doing. I'd like to ask you about that a little bit.
Sure.
Appreciate your reference to what Kern County recently did too with the 22%, because as you know, that's really hard to do. It was sort of once-in-a-lifetime kind of thing for us, and we were able to get it across the finish line, which is huge. As you know, impacts of your workforce and their morale is, you know, it's so critical to the bottom line in every sense. So I saw your academy. How long has it been in place?
20 years.
20 years, my goodness. So I'm curious if we have, and this is a longer-term conversation, which I'd love to have, Larry, if you're open, but how do we get this program, maybe it already is, but within our dual enrollment program in high school? So to, you know, these are skills that can be built upon over a lifetime. These are basic foundational skills, the EMT position, eventually the paramedic position. I mean, these are life, you can become a nurse, a doctor, I mean, you can just continue to grow on that. And so the, you know, the workforce piece, I think, is really, really critical here. As we've said a thousand times before from this size, we have the second highest youth disconnected rate, meaning kids that are not in school and not working, largely because it doesn't seem relevant or for whatever reason, right? There's lots of reasons, but, you know, we have a quarter of our young people, 16 to 24, who, if they had an opportunity like this, would be paying taxes and saving for a home. We know that. So, you know, how do we grow that program? And we have to grow our own talent. I agree with you entirely, but we, you know, this is a, this seems pretty simple to me to connect the dots on, how do we make sure that this is in all of our high schools and that we're giving this opportunity so kids hit the ground running at 18 or even sooner than that, so they're making money before they graduate?
Supervisor Perez, great, great question. We have a, we have a roadblock that we haven't figured out how to get over yet, and that's called insurance. Our insurance company won't insure anybody under the age of 21, right? So they're in the risk assessment business, and they know that at 18, 19, 20, there's much higher risk, and they just won't insure them.
And much more fun.
Right. So at 20, we have some inroads at 20. We can hire a few 20-year-olds, as long as we stay within our insurance profile. Once we get out of that, our insurance rates go through the roof. But certainly to the commitment to evolve, right? There has to be an opportunity to bring them in, to do work that doesn't involve driving, right? So we now, through the, the folks who we brought in from out of town, through one of the vendors, we have 12 EMTs here. Not all of them are driving for us, right? So we're experimenting a little bit to see how this works out, right? There may be an opportunity in the future to hire some younger kids. High school kids would be tough to hire, but that doesn't mean that you can't start teaching them and mentoring them to bring them along. We had an explorer program for quite a while, and then we had to abandon it. We just didn't think it was right for some of these kids to be, I don't think it's right for some adults to be seeing what we see. I mean, we see some pretty nasty stuff, people that are being abused that shouldn't be abused, and, you know, lots of blood and gut. I mean, just, it's the truth, right? And so we got away from the explorer program because we just thought it was just too risky at that point, and I think a lot of EMS explorer programs have gone by the wayside because of that. But that doesn't mean that there's not ways to get involved in the schools. We just have to find those methods.
Okay, fair enough.
We just need to work with the superintendent schools to come up with some ideas to make it work.
Thank you. The experiment with 800 callers, where 20, only a quarter needed to go to the hospital, that's, that's a certain population, of course. People that are hysterical or have, you know, challenges in cognitive comprehension, right, are going to want to see a doctor in person or whatever, right? So who was that 800? Can you tell me a little more about that? If you don't have it now, that's okay.
Some of those people called because they were complaining of difficulty breathing, and we get there, and they hadn't used their inhaler for two days, or their inhaler was empty. They needed a refill, right?
Okay.
So the doctor's able to get a pharmacy to deliver an inhaler. You know, we give them breathing treatment while we're there, and then an inhaler gets dropped off. Or somebody's in some type of a mental health crisis because they haven't taken their medicine, and the medicine is there in the house.
Right.
Right? So after the doctor talks to the person like, okay, John, could you go down to the bathroom? You're looking for this prescription and bring it back, and let's give it to her. So there's a lot of different patients that fit in there. There are people that call that just don't know what to do, so they call 911, and they just need somebody to explain to them, you know? And the doctors, when they get on the phone, are very, 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 and by the way, it's an iPad, and we hold it up, so they're looking right at the doctor, the doctor's looking at the patient. Those folks are, that's going to evolve as well. That's a big word I'm using a lot. But as we're now throughout the county, right, you're going to see, instead of five or six encounters a day, you're going to see 15 or 20 patient encounters a day where telehealth is used to help with the issue. There's also patients that, on those responses, that we get there, and the person, I'm not going, I just don't want to go. We get the doctor on the telephone, and he, Supervisor Perez, you really need to go to the hospital. There's nothing this, these guys can do for you, right? You need to go to the hospital. We need to get you there now. And we've actually had a, we had a, one of the patients was having a heart attack, didn't want to go, and after a conversation with the doctor, he went. So a lot of people who have heart attacks don't want to go to the hospital. We were not.
It's a brilliant system. I mean, it allows you to just get medical care from all over the world.
Right.
Right? I mean, as we have diverse populations that have various kind of, you know, metaphysics about the world and healthcare, I mean, right? I mean, we should be moving that direction too, is ultimately, it's what the patient is going to believe and be able to implement for themselves, right?
So we also get translator services through that system. So we are with somebody from the Sikh community, and they don't speak English. We can get somebody on through that system that can talk to them in their native tongue.
Sure.
And get them the care they need.
Sure. And also just various ways of, you know, there's just, the population is very diverse.
Absolutely.
Right? We're both in the business of making customers happy, one way or another, right? So we just got to get there.
Right.
And I appreciate the attitude, and this is just such a helpful presentation. And I know we're just doing a receive and file now, I'm probably consuming way too much time, so I'll stop. But I'd like to know more about this. Bryn, and we could talk about it in the future too, because, you know, the 211 system, we've got to link that better so that just in general, our people know, have a better sense that they can call 211 and get a whole host of services, including mental health services, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Because the 911 system's obviously getting too much, that 800-person, you know, trial that you did is really, I think, really insightful about how we can funnel some of these, some folks that need help and just need a helping hand, but in a way that's practical and efficient and actually, you know, is not just handing someone off to another person on a phone. I mean, nobody wants that. Anyway, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
I'll talk to you later, Bryn.
Supervisor Scrivner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Surface, thank you for being here and for your presentation. We appreciate it, as well as all the other representatives from Hall. It's been a pleasure working with the company over the past many, many years that I've been on the board and before that at the city council level. I'm looking at, Ms. Carrigan, I'm looking at this ground ambulance service performance report that you compiled, specifically page five and six, and the, there's a standard that the International Academies of Emergency Dispatch has set for 73% either high compliance, compliant, partial compliance, low compliance, and noncompliant. And in 2019, Hall Ambulance maintained a 96% of evaluated calls in the high compliance and compliance categories, which sounds very good in comparison to the 73% standard set by this IAEA organization. And so I don't know to what extent that's a benchmark that the industry as a whole looks to, to evaluate themselves and for agencies and the public to evaluate them. Even when Hall was experiencing the struggles with retention and recruitment and all the other, all the other things that the COVID-19 pandemic brought upon them, do you still have the issues with downtime, John, where your ambulances are out of service for four or five hours? If you're transporting a COVID patient, I remember that that was, you know, to sanitize, et cetera, which, you know, seemed like...
Supervisor Scrivner, we're down to maybe one or two a day.
Okay.
From 20 at a time, we're down to one or two a day. We now have staff on 24/7 at our main office ready to decontaminate, and then in the rural areas, they've got the equipment there to decontaminate on their own. So we've gotten much more efficient at that. So that's been a blessing for sure.
Good. But even, you know, even at the lowest point in your compliance, according to these charts that Ms. Carrigan provided to the board, the second to last chart, I mean, you're still hovering about the 80% in compliance. So Ms. Carrigan, how should we view this in light of the 73% standard? And is this, this is a standard that other ambulance services are also measured by? And so I guess just in that context?
Supervisor Scrivner through the chair, would you allow me one moment, please?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Supervisor Scrivner through the chair, if I may defer to Jeff Ferris, EMS program manager, to answer your question.
Absolutely. Mr. Paris, good morning.
Good morning, Supervisor Scrivner. The dispatch center at OCD or Hall Ambulance Service has routinely exceeded the 73% mark, and they have been the recipient of the Service of Excellence ACE accreditation every year that we've been using this system. So yes, they are above average and above standard every year in the dispatch center. And as that corresponds to ambulance, that's, that really doesn't, it doesn't line up with each other, they're two totally separate pieces of data.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate that. I, you know, I know that across the board, whether you're talking about any of our county departments, any private entity, retention, recruitment of employees is a tremendous struggle for everyone. And so I'm definitely sympathetic to Hall's situation, especially in the recent, it looks like 2020 was probably, sorry, 2022 was probably the hardest year. I'm definitely concerned about the fact that we're seeing a slippage in performance, but I'm encouraged by the efforts and the sense of collaboration that we have between our public health department and Hall to try and address this, and open to any strategies and any methodologies that we might be able to employ in order to bring that back up. But I think we all need to bear in mind that, you know, these are pressures that are impacting every industry across the board, and so Hall obviously is not alone in that. And so we appreciate your efforts, and thank you for being here once again today. Thank you, Ms. Carrigan.
Thank you, Supervisor Scrivner. Any other member comments before we go to public comment?
I'd like to...
Oh, yeah, Supervisor Couch?
I just want to say thank you. You guys, Supervisor Scrivner alluded to, we had some slippage in performance, but what did we expect with everything that got thrown at you? And I know, based on my conversations with you and others in your organization, that you go to work every day, and you try to make things better for the people at Kern County, and you try to take care of us. And you do a great job of that. And I just wanted to say thank you for what you do, and all of your employees, because they're the people in the field that are showing up when we call 911. I would like to know more, we can do this, talk about this later, about the, I don't know what, I'll call it the three stretch, and you're out. If you make too many calls that are not legit 911 calls, I want to know more about that because, and I think that there needs to be an effort, I'm not laying this all on you, we need to have an effort, maybe it's through your department and others, that really educates people on that. Because one of these days, there's going to be somebody that makes a call, and I hope to God this doesn't happen, that they make a call, but they're on that list, and it's a call that they needed to make.
So Supervisor Couch, that program is actually managed by the county, not us. So we have a report, one of the things that we do, we mine, we have, this first watch was a software company that works for us, is mining data for us, and every day they give us an inappropriate user report. There's people that are on there for 2022, for 115.
There's more than three.
Yeah, yeah. And so the county will issue, when somebody falls out of, when they fall into the inappropriate user, the county will send them a letter, and then they'll send them another letter. And then, so there's a lot of effort that goes in.
Yes.
Or somebody's put on that, we're not going to respond list. I don't know if there's anybody on the do not respond list right now.
Supervisor Couch through the chair, if I may. Yeah, we do send three letters to the individual. The third one is actually hand-delivered, and there's a discussion with the individual when we hand-deliver it. And then we do refer that patient to our field nursing program, where we follow up to try to link them with social services that may be needed. And the ambulances do continue to respond, evaluate the patient to make sure they don't have an emergent need, and then just don't transport them unless that urgent need exists.
Well, as usual, you're doing a lot more than anybody, including myself, realizes. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to public, oh, Supervisor Peters, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Forrest. I just wanted to say thank you also. I appreciate all you guys do. I know you have a really tough job, but we appreciate you doing it. And sometime in the future, I would like to talk a little bit more about what you mentioned with partnership with some of these local companies like Pro Safety Rescue, Trinity Safety, I think, was on there, and just what kind of efficiencies or cost savings, what kind of impact that has. But thank you, John, and to all your staff.
I would just close, the folks in uniform behind me represent over 2,000 calls in 2022. Those are the people that are supposed to be interviewing quality improvement measures, managing our departments, and they're all, they've been out running calls. So for the last three weeks, they've been in the office and been able to get some work done, and there's a little less pressure on them, but they've earned their money the last couple of years without a doubt, running COVID calls themselves, picking up COVID and having to stay home for two weeks after catching COVID running calls. So been a tremendous effort by them, and I couldn't stand here in front of you and not give them credit for what they've done.
Thank you. I'd like to also echo my colleagues' comments as well. Thank you, Hall Ambulance. Thank you, Mr. Surface, for your presentation. It's just kind of a perfect storm in terms of increased population, increased call volume, decreased staffing, so many variables. So just want to commend our EMS staff and our providers for making it work and navigating the challenges and coming up with real solutions. I just had two quick things I wanted to talk about. Is the Riverside Hospital, are they doing something different that they have bed space? Or are they just an outlier? Is there anything we can learn from that that we can apply here?
It's good luck.
Good luck, okay.
It truly is just good luck.
Okay.
Right? We go to KECC almost daily, USC KECC, we go to UCLA almost daily. They go any, when the hospitals have a relationship with another hospital, they use that to their benefit to move some of the sicker folks, and it really is, it's luck that they can get a bed in Riverside.
Thank you. And in terms of disincentivizing the usage for those that don't have that high security level, I understand the triage at the hospital, but are you allowed to triage at the first response, at pickup?
Absolutely. That is what we do first. And then we decide right, you know, within the first three minutes, we make a decision whether or not we should transport or use tele 911 to help the person through their crisis, or help coach them that they don't need to go. We actually, one of those funny things, lady gets bit by a dog, we're like, hey, you know, this can be handled by an urgent care. She goes, great, I'll go to urgent care. She goes to the urgent care, he should have gone to an ER so he could put stitches in, you know? So of course, they call to complain to us that we told them to go to urgent care. Urgent care was the right way to handle that, just apparently we went to the wrong urgent care, they couldn't resolve the issue, right?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay. At this time, we'll open it to public comment to see if anyone wants to comment. Thank you, Mr. Surface.
You bet.
Paul Infest again. I didn't know we could talk at this specific part, but I just wanted to say that I actually have written in Hall's ambulance on emergency calls. Not one I made. I was hit by a car while crossing a street on foot in 2015, and I was completely knocked out. I had no idea where I was, but I heard sounds, and I figured I was in the ambulance. I did hear the voice said, oh, he's on Zeralto, so one of them. I fortunately keep my medication in my wallet, so they knew they had to take precautions for that. And I got to the Kern Medical Center, trauma care. I think the entire process from the time I was hit, by the time I was in the hospital, was like 10, 15 minutes. So it was really good service. I can't come up and say I enjoyed the ride or anything like that, because you don't do that in an ambulance, but that's not the purpose. The purpose is to get you to where you need to go. And the second time was during COVID. I was in a nursing facility waiting for it, and my leg started leaking where they had pulled out earlier the rods that I was in there for the first place deal. And they came out, and they also did a thorough checkup. This time, I was conscious the whole way, so I knew all the things they were doing. I just wanted to say that I'm just really glad we have such a good company like Hall's Ambulance representing us here in Kern County.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more public comment before we bring it back to the board? Okay, seeing that, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Thank you. Motion?
For second.
Motion and second. Members, cast your vote.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to closed session. Having no more items to consider, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to hear items under County Minister of Office 4041 and County Council Number 42. So moved. Okay, we're adjourned.